All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Rackliff City Council Work Session for Monday, March 8th, 2021 at 5:00 PM at Rackliff City Hall. If you all will please rise for invocation from our city clerk and remain standing for our pledge.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the blessings that you give each and every one of us every day. Father, we're thankful for each and every council member and the mayor here today. And Father, we ask that you guide and direct each decision that they make and help them to know the right thing to do on behalf of our citizens. Father, bless all those that are still sick and those that are fighting this COVID. Father, we pray for our service members both here and abroad. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'd like to, hold on one second, I'm gonna turn this light. Is that better? Y'all need more? All right. All right, this time we have roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Deroche, Jackson, Merle, Owens, Thompson.
Here.
Yates.
All right. Well, welcome everyone to our meeting. Just as a reminder, if you all want to make comments or say anything, if you'll please grab your mic so those that are watching at home can hear. I got just a change of order on the agenda. We're gonna move number two to number one. Mr. Valenti, like most of us that probably know, sometimes get called to take our kids to events. And his actually had a, there he is, he had a, there he is, he had to take his daughter to something, so we wanted to kind of discuss Redmar. So, we also have on the line Casey Bolton, he's with Commonwealth Economics. And so, welcome gentlemen. Tim, you got that face in there to the camera so they can see. And I'll put the mic down here so we can try to hear them. All right, can you hear me, Matt? Let me turn you up just a little bit here.
Can you hear me?
Yep. All right, you there?
Okay.
All right. So, wanna just touch base, I know there's been a lot of questions, of course, here in our community. We've talked with council members as well. Wanna update everyone. Now, last year, of course, I hope everybody understands that COVID really kind of put a stop to a lot of things, not only that, but our project. We did proceed forward, we still met the necessary requirements. And on the first of, or January 1st of 28th of 2001, the state heard the TIF proposal and that preliminary approval was given to move forward to the next step, which is the final, the consultant fee. So, Matt, I just, I know you gotta go, so I'm gonna let you start off, just to kind of tell everyone where we're at with the project and kind of what you're feeling.
You just stole my thunder.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, as you all know, the city granted us approval last spring on the TIF. And as JJ said, we obviously got slowed down a little bit by COVID, but kind of worked with the city team and with Casey, kind of consulting and got the applications together for the state application for the TIF. And we got that in toward the end of the summer. And as you can imagine, in there, all meeting remotely and things kind of took a while to get put together. But as JJ said, the January meeting, which was January 28th, we got the preliminary approval, which basically, you know, approves the project that we are applying for the right type of TIF. They're accepting the application, they're gonna move forward with their analysis of it. So, they've gone ahead and hired the market research company to do a net new analysis, which is really what the state is concerned with, how many net new tax dollars does the project produce. And then, from that, they will go ahead and kind of determine at what level they will participate in the TIF. And I'll let Casey kind of broaden or get into more specifics on that if we need to. But on the project side, we are still working on, you know, trying to put together the different financing pieces. As you all can imagine, hotel financing isn't really out there to do right now because of COVID. I'm hoping that, and we have hotels ourselves, we're starting to see it pick back up a little bit right now. And I'm hoping probably sometime in the second quarter that we'll see enough return to normal business and travel where some of these lenders will feel enough comfort to start working on a construction loan for hotels. That, along with us having the participation of the state in the TIF, will allow us to get going. We're also right now, I think probably what's there to do, assuming the state participates in the TIF, what's there to do first is the apartment piece, kind of would be like phase one, because the construction financing in the market is there to do right now for that. So, assuming we get the participation from the state at a good enough level, the numbers should work and we should be able to start the process with the apartments, you know, on the financing right away. That hopefully, you know, depending on how fast the state moves here, but assuming that state, you know, gets through the rest of the process in the next few months, I would hope to be in the ground with the apartments by the end of the year. That's, you know, that's a best-case scenario if everything kind of moves in the right, in the right direction.
Casey, you got anything?
I know, I know that's usually what people would really want to know when we do these projects. When are you gonna start? That's, that's the main, that's always the main question, so.
Yeah. We were hoping to be, you know, like if everything went, progressed the way we was hoping, you know, we was hoping to be in ground starting this year, but.
Yeah, well, we were, we were hoping this spring we would be turning shovels, but yeah, COVID hit.
Yep. Casey, you got anything?
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback on what, what Matt has said, we, we have gotten through, you know, the first checkbox, so to speak, with the state, which was a little more difficult this time around than it typically is. They changed their application some recently and were asking a little bit more of us. But we did, we did meet the checkbox preliminary approval for the mixed use program and they have engaged the state's consultant to begin their process. We are working with them now to begin scheduling their interviews with community leaders, site visits, so that they can understand the project and what it means to the area and to the state overall. So, it will be, you know, full steam ahead, once we can get those kicked off and we'll begin working with the consultants to be sure that they truly understand what this project means, not only to the community, but to the Commonwealth.
Matt, I know you have to go pretty soon. Is there anything you want to add before we cut you loose?
No, we're just, you know, I just want everyone to know, even though it's been a long, or it was a long 2020, we're still fully committed to getting this thing done.
All right, sounds good. Well, thanks again, I'm sorry, I know that this came up and you needed to shift the schedule a little bit, so thanks for, for taking this call or the Zoom and being able to kind of update our community here that you're still there, you're still willing to move forward. And we're getting this, we're getting this process through, you know, I don't think people realize how much you and I talk throughout the, throughout the month or the day, so I appreciate your, your candor and still wanting to participate here in our community.
Yep, absolutely. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Casey. Hold on, hey, Matt, Matt, don't hang up, don't delete. Do y'all have any questions real quick for Matt before he gets off? Yeah, go ahead, just make sure you have a mic, sorry.
Hello?
Just push it all the way up. Go ahead, you okay?
This is good, can y'all hear?
Yep.
Okay, you said several times, assume the participation in the state, I assume if the state participates, is there a reason why the state wouldn't participate? I'm not sure what you mean by assuming there's participation in the state.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. So, the process that we're in is really to determine the extent to which the state participates. So, the state's consultant will come in and determine essentially, how much in incremental tax revenue will the state allow the project to recover as reimbursement for infrastructure? We put together an analysis that shows that we think it's going to have a pretty significant impact from a state tax perspective, but the state's consultant will come in and do their own analysis. And based on that analysis, they will effectively have the state's participation at something that's generally less than the overall amount that otherwise the project would generate. In other words, they will make a determination that some of the project is truly net new to the state and some of the project may involve transfer spending. And based on that analysis, they will issue an award to the project. You know, it could be several million dollars, it could be $10 million, and that's the question that remains to be answered.
So, we don't, we don't know what the state participation is, so when we say, if the state doesn't like you to say they are participating, they like?
How much they'll participate.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we can say there will be participation, it's just a matter at this point, to what extent.
At what level? Anybody else?
I just want to say. I just want to thank Matt for, you know, sticking with the project, even through the trying times. I appreciate it. I know we all appreciate it and we look forward to see your vision come to, come to light and hopefully sooner than later, you can be breaking ground.
I can't see him, so I don't know what it is. But.
I don't know if the installation is done by anybody.
I don't know. Matt, just a quick question, do you know if demo, I mean, again, everything's, I guess, waiting around to see what the state's gonna do, but if the state was to approve, when, when do you think potentially demo could happen at the site?
I'm not gonna prognosticate that.
Yeah, I don't think you'd be hard.
Again, probably not till the fall. I mean, we're not, we wouldn't, we really wouldn't demo until a few months before we were ready to actually start construction.
Yep, that's fine. Yeah, and the two, I know you can't see him, that was councilwoman Merle and Councilman Yates that made the comments. I know you can only see my beautiful face, but.
Right.
You can see, yeah, I just wanted you to know, so. All right, guys, well, thanks so much and we'll follow up and we'll continue to update the community as this comes along. But thanks, Matt, thanks, Casey. Appreciate y'all for taking the time.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Yeah, I know, they can only see me.
Yeah, we set this up.
But yeah, no, the TIF, of course, you know, when the state consultant comes in, you know, the evaluation that was given, that we looked at was 14.1 million. So, you know, the state will come in, that's on infrastructure only, that's not on vertical construction, that's on infrastructure. And so, you know, the state could come in and say, we'll give you eight, we believe it's worth 10, we believe it's worth 12, and then that's when some of the negotiation comes in. So, we're hoping, of course, it's on the higher side, based on the fact that a piece of, a four-by-eight sheet of OSB now is $85. Two years ago, that wasn't the case, when we put this plan together, so.
JJ, I do have a question, which I probably should have asked.
You wouldn't do that to me.
I know. Do we have any idea what the turnaround time is expected with the state regarding the approval or whatever?
They always say longer, six months possibly. We're hoping back to have the preliminary done by three months.
Okay. And that's six months from January 28th or?
Well, if you figure the approval with the state board came the first, January 1st of 20, or January 28th of 21, now we're in March 8th of 21, and we're still waiting on the state to get with us to do the consultant timeframe. So, that's where they do the preliminary, they come out and do the site visit and all that stuff. So, again, we're on their heels, so that's already a month went by without any scheduling. So, we're kind of on their timeframe right now.
I figured we were, I just wondered if there was any kind of anticipated timeline.
They didn't give us one. We, they said usually after the consultant does their report, they hope to have some information back within three months. So, we're kind of in that, starting to fall in that window, so I don't know. Travel, because they're at, so the consultant is not a local consultant, the consultant is an at-a-state consultant. They have two companies, I think, that bid to do stuff like this, so they're, they're not tied to anyone here in the state. So, the outside consultant will come in and the outside consultant is the one that, that does this. They come in, they interview, they, they look at the project from an outside scope, so. Yep. Anybody else before we move on? All right, next, we're gonna talk about, Ashley, do you have that information? I'll pass out to them. I have some information for you regarding, so looking at, y'all already have it, okay, the part-time code enforcement proposal. Over the, of course, I think everyone knows that code enforcement has been one of those issues that all of our community wants us to improve on. And so, in speaking with several of you, Mr. Yates in particular, last month, we, you know, are looking at doing a part-time code enforcement. You know, the height of our code enforcement, and I can get the fire chief to come in here, is typically during the spring, fall season. I mean, during fall through January to spring again, you don't have as many code enforcement issues. And that's, that's because you're tall grass, people aren't outside as much, vegetation. And so, looking at the possibility of hiring a part-time code enforcement officer, I think was something that we looked at. I've given some, some different numbers there to take a look at, but I guess first of all, the question would be, are you all interested in, in looking at a part-time code enforcement officer? So.
Mike, sir.
What about the?
That we have there now? Ron would still be on, so.
Okay, so, in addition to the full-time?
Full-time, we'd have a part-time. And what that, what that would help alleviate is, Ron is still gonna focus in on, like doing, where the tall grass comes in, junk behind houses, garbage, this would be something that we would push towards a part-time person to, to alleviate the other things that Ron's, of course, currently working on, dilapidated houses, rental issues, so on and so forth, abandoned cars, stuff like that, yeah.
Turn this thing on and it goes off.
Yeah.
I think we need to move batteries, maybe. Now, I know, you know, we've had numerous conversations during the summer, I get calls left and right, that's one of my biggest complaints that I get. One of the biggest complaints that I get, most frequent complaints are code enforcement. And unfortunately, I think with Ron, he goes after anything that's overwhelmed. And a lot of the times, he doesn't have a time to be proactive, because he's always reacting by, you know, maybe other council members are calling him and letting him know about some complaints, I'm calling him, several calls coming in the mayor's office. So, he's constantly reacting rather than being able to be proactive as he's driving around and sees something that maybe needs to be addressed. He's not getting to address those until they blow up and you do get complaints. So, I think we definitely need a part-time code enforcement officer, so maybe we can be a little more proactive than reactive.
Yeah, and I, I think I want to just remind the council, the reason I'm looking at the part-time position is, is following that guideline for the six months that we can hire someone as a part-time person. In the fall, like I said, through, through winter, the code enforcement is not as high as it would be during the, the spring and summertime. This would also save us on our retirement benefits, healthcare benefits, so on and so forth. So, that's why we're looking at it from a part-time position to try to save tax dollars all while meeting some of the goals that we all have set out to try to clean our city up. Jamie, you want to step in real quick? Is there anything I'm, I'm missing that you want to touch on as far as the code enforcement side?
No, no, I think you, I think you've, you did everything, I was listening.
Yeah. And I know Ron, I mean, of course, it's, it's all day, I mean, code enforcement's a constant, as you all know, even now with the, the animal ordinance, so that's something that's, that's gonna be added as well. So, there's a lot of, of things we, we're doing, we can, we want, we're doing good, but we can always do better. And I think it's just, Ron needs help. And I think you see it now from a different perspective, when, since he's moved over to your, your department, just how much code enforcement has.
Yeah, yeah, most definitely. I mean, we're, we're getting calls, we, we've tried to switch things up, to try to make it a little better, to alleviate some of that, but we're still seeing a lot of them. We'll send in letters out before Ron goes out, if we get an address, maybe, you know, they got to the high grass, we're taking the calls, send them the letter out and then that way he doesn't have to go out there right away. And then, when he, if he does drive by, have him to drive by and then he checks it.
Yeah, it's a repeat visits as well.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it's alleviated some of the, but a part-time person is gonna help out tremendously, tremendously.
Do you see anything in the ordinances that you would like to see changed to help y'all out, to give maybe a little more teeth or, so you can make things progress quicker?
Sometimes on, on the grass issue, I don't know, I'm liking myself to talk about this with the seven-day, where we have to allow them to have the seven days, but we've talked about that and we've alleviated some of those issues, so. But I don't think we have anything right now that's pushing, that we maybe need to change, but probably in the future, there's some things that we had talked about with the other council that was here, maybe some things in the future, you know, tractor-trailing and that sort of thing, because we're starting to see some stack up of, of that sort of thing. And getting Ron's input, because he's the guy out on, on the streets and seeing that stuff, I think it'll.
You know, I've said it a million times to JJ, and I get a lot of complaints about grass cutting and, you know, people's property all junked up. I'm looking forward to getting complaints from someone calling me to say, hey, the city was at my house and they're making me clean up my yard. And I'm, you know, I'm telling, clean it up.
There you go. Yeah, when Ron's out there and Ron does get a complaint, he works with them, so if they're saying he's not working with them, I mean, it's, it's balls. He works with everybody that he, that he comes across and he gives them chances and then tries to get them cleaned up, and if not, we, we obviously do alleviate and all that, so.
Yeah, now, there is some associated cost with this to, because we're gonna have to buy the, the computers necessary to, for the individual to have the same software that Ron's using, so they, they work. We're looking at taking a vehicle right now, potentially, if we can get this date hired in of an extra vehicle we have, and maybe put that individual in. And then, at budget time, we'd have to supply maybe like an old, maybe like give one of the old building, I won't say old, but the building official vehicle to the fire department and then, you know, switch it somehow like that, that way. So, we're doing the best we can to save. But I think, do y'all have a preference on the pay? What grade fours at the 1367 or grade threes 1217? I'm gonna let you all, because you all control the money, kind of what you all thought.
Can I just ask real quick too, because I'm getting some of those same calls already too, about the cars and the debris and the junk in the yards and things like that. But being new, I didn't really realize or when the change over that, that Ron, now the code enforcement is under the fire department, so when did that happen? I just want to get a little bit of back history.
That was three, four years ago?
Yeah.
Three or four years ago?
Mayor Weaver moved him.
Okay, so then, so when people call, they don't call here, they call the fire department for code enforcement?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, well, I'm all in favor for a part-time person, I do believe we need it, but I really didn't realize. Don't ask me why I've been, but I didn't realize that was part of it now.
Hello? All right. There was a reason why it got switched over, because I think the fire department had, had a little more teeth behind it, right?
Yeah, and Ron, he, he's actually a deputy fire marshal also, so it gives him a little bit more authority than just a code enforcement officer.
So, as far as the pay is concerned, I mean, what would the part-time person, what would their duties include?
Just basically going around and then doing the complaints on the tall grass.
Garbage.
Garbage.
Yeah.
And, and the smaller things that are more just, more of a nuisance to Ron, because it's just taking his time when he can be working on the larger issues.
And more obvious.
Issues, yeah.
Issues, yes, yes. Easier issues.
If I may ask, what grade is Ron?
Five.
Yeah, five, yeah. I'm ready to go. Been vacationing.
Too much smoke, inhale too much.
I think it's good.
There it goes.
My question is, would we be able to get someone at a, at a grade three to go out there and do that?
No, I, you know.
That's a.
It's part-time, so it's kind of, you know, I, I'm picturing somebody that's potentially someone that, you know, we're not, it's somebody that's looking for a part-time job, I don't think it's somebody that's gonna be a, and it may be a younger person, I'm not saying they won't be, if somebody applied, that may be younger, but I'm guessing somebody that may be potentially retired, maybe a veteran, somebody that's wanting to help participate in the community and, and help clean up and stuff like that. Potentially, I don't know, I mean, I really don't know.
It's part-time in the sense of six-month period or five-month, five, six-month period, but is it a 40-hour week?
It can be, yes. We can work them and that'd be a scheduling thing that Jamie would work out, as long as you work them in a six-month period, according to chance, as long as you work them in a six-month period, anything under 40 hours a week is fine, anything over six months at 40 hours, then put you in a, in a different, yeah. So, it's a six-month period that we're looking at.
The good thing too is we can, we can adjust their schedules, Ron's daytime, and most of the time, we may be able to work this person like a weekend or in the evening hours to catch those folks when they're at home, to alleviate the, the calling and also the, you know, the mail and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, I have, I have an issue right now that I'm addressing, I've been to the house twice today and the individual evidently works, and so I'll have to go by tonight to talk to him about a problem that a neighbor's having with him, so. It's the only thing we can do. And so, sometimes, a lot of times, it's after hours that some of the stuff, you have to be able to meet with people, so.
Do you put those notices, like we talked about?
They do have notices.
Before, you have notices that we've been here, contact us, okay?
They do have those, I did check after we, I did check after we spoke, so yeah, yeah. Yep. So, really, it's just, you know, it's, it's up to you guys, this is an adjustment to the pay scale. So, it's up to you guys, what you guys decide, and that's kind of what I was asking you all, proposing this, and then you all kind of decide what you, what you feel is appropriate, whether it's a grade four at 1365 or grade three at 1217. If, and then, of course, if you guys are okay with that and whatever you guys approve, we would like to try to get them in and hire, get their official hire date by the, by May, so we can get started and get them trained and knowing the city.
I'd recommend a grade four.
That's one.
You can do it, you do a work session and then we put it together for the, for the vote.
I, I would agree with Kim, so that we can get some quality people applying for the job and for what they're gonna be dealing with, you know, the, the people are not gonna be generally happy when they're showing up at their house, so I, I think a grade four.
And there is an offset, because you're not paying the benefit side of it, so.
I'm good with grade four.
Grade four, that's three. Councilwoman Deroche. Four.
I think it should be four, because of these testing member wages that they're trying to get to.
Yeah. Four, okay. All right. So, Ms. Ashley, and then if you all are okay, we'll have to, I believe, because we don't have that on your strength table, we'll have to amend that at the budget, put it on the strength table, and then that would be an amendment, and then we'll add that grade four in, so we'll have that, I'll have a chance at that.
Just pass on to Ron, appreciate all he does, I was on the phone with him yesterday because complaints are starting to come in, so, you know, appreciate everything he does, his work doesn't go unnoticed.
Yeah, you and the building officials and everybody, great job.
Yeah, you and the, yes, and the fire chief, I appreciate all you do, ensuring our public's safe and making sure the building and the fire codes are up to par, so appreciate that.
Yep. I know, I seen Pete smile underneath that mask over there when y'all did grade four, I hope he, Pete, you gonna apply for this job, or is that, that what's, that what's happening? All right, Jamie, thank you, sir. All right, next, we have a public works update, where's my sheet at? So, I kind of just wanted to, I got Jeff Hatley here, I was talking to Jeff earlier. Jeff has been with the city for 40 years. He has served as my public works director for at least, let's see, four, five, at least six of those years. And so, he has extensive knowledge and it's great, when we tore this stage down and we built this, we put all this in, there's some dates that were written on the wood, well, guess who wrote them? Jeff. Look at him, he's back there trying not to smile, but he's a man of few words, if you know Jeff, he don't say a lot, but I kind of wanted to touch a little bit on what we went through last month with the snow, how much salt we went through and kind of where we're currently at. So, quickly on the, so I think a lot of people last month during the snowstorm, there was a lot of, we got a lot of praise, but there was some frustration, and I want to explain some of that. And I know some people probably won't agree with this, but we had ice that hit on Thursday. So, the guys worked through the night and then we had a second round of snow. So, our, our routine, we, we clear the main roads first. So, Dixie, Lincoln, Lockston are done by, and Vine Street are performed by the state. The state clears those roads, that's not something that we do. But we clear a lot of the major roads, Wilson Road, your main. But we clear a lot of the major roads, Wilson Road, your main thoroughfares through your subdivision, so on and so forth. And so that's what the state, or that's what we do, we do first. Well, when the storm hit on Thursday, um, you, you know, you're not, you can't scrape ice in a sense, so we have to go out and salt. We had about six hundred tons to start with, uh, is what, and we haven't bought a whole lot of salt in the last three years because we've had a mild, mild, um, winter. So they went out and did that. Well, then we had a, a recouple of snow again, it came back again. And so guess what? They had to stop when they started going down the side streets and come back and hit the main roads again, the ones that we typically would do. They get those cleared and then they start to get back in the side streets again, and then what happened? We had round three. And, you know, uh, what sometimes people don't realize is on the snow side of it, when you're in the plow truck and you're plowing, um, and it's, it's a blizzard coming down, as it was, you look behind you thirty minutes later, everything you just cleared again is just, it's snow covered again. And so that's why I think there was some frustration on people where they say the snow trucks haven't been in our area for, you know, we haven't seen them since the snow started. It's because they had to repeat everything they just started. And so, um, myself and my executive assistant here went out just to kinda show what a cul-de-sac looks like and how long it takes to actually clear a cul-de-sac. And, um, because you go down a cul-de-sac, you're pushing snow, you, you end in a dead end. So where do you go? You know, keep in mind garbage hadn't been picked up in two weeks. Um, there's driveways, there's mailboxes. Where do you put the snow? And you're in a plow truck where you're turning. Well, when you turn the plow, guess where the snow goes? It all rolls out. So in about fi, in about two hours, two and a half hours or so, I did about five cul-de-sacs, if that tells you. And we've got about a hundred and twenty-one miles of surface that we have to clear. And so that's, you know, I, I know may not be soothing to some, but that, that's, that's a real explanation. That's what happened. And so, um, I know our guys did a lot of work. The other complaint that we had that I wanna address is where do you put the snow? So as I'm, you cleared your drive and I come down, well, the snow's in the blade and it's pointed right, where do you think the snow's gonna go? I mean, that was a complaint that we had and, you know, ultimately, where do you put the snow? I mean, that, that was my response back. Where do you want them to put it? Well, not in my driveway. Well, I've got twelve driveways on one road. Where do, where do, you know, there's no way for me to, to do that. And so ultimately, you know, I thank our guys. It was a lot of work. Um, those guys worked around the clock, and when you say that, you came in in twelve-hour shifts, you had one crew work six hours, another crew came, or excuse me, six-man crew come in, then another man crew come in. We ended up being down two men for obviously various reasons. And so I worked a night to try to help those guys. Um, but ultimately, you know, it is, it is what it is. And so we, we made it through. The sun's out, Mike. It's beautiful outside. There's no snow on the ground.
I don't have any complaint.
Yeah, so we're, we're good. Now, we did go through about, yes, sir?
I was gonna say, I think you answered, uh, one of the, or one of, one of my questions, cause one of the biggest complaints that I had, uh, was about the cul-de-sac, so it explains it, cause you was the one plowing the cul-de-sac.
It was my fault.
So I, 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 I knew, I knew it wouldn't, Jeff. I knew all public works do a fine job. So I just wanted to point that out, but that explains it.
They had a Chris Yates sign still up near your yard. I wanted to make sure they knew that, yeah. Um, but we did about, so we, our full cap up there at the, at there at our salt bin is about six hundred tons. Uh, we estimated, we used nearly five hundred tons of that. So, um, right now, we typically buy salt for about eighty-seven dollars, according to what Jeff said a couple of years ago, and that was in twenty nineteen. Uh, it is now up to anywhere, if you can, if you could've got it during that timeframe, it was anywhere from a hundred to two fifty per ton. And so we, Jeff and I went back and forth about this. I was, I was prepared to go ahead and, and move forward with getting more because I didn't know if we'd have another round. Jeff said, with his forty years' experience, go back to your office and drink a cup of coffee and calm down, we'll be fine. And so we didn't buy it. So, um, Jeff saved you all a little money by, by doing that. But we will have to replenish that come next budget cycle, and typically, um, we will fill that bin back up. So hopefully, we'll get through that and the price should be lower, um, than that hundred to two hundred and fifty. I'm guessing probably somewhere in about a hundred and ten is probably what we'll, we'll look at. Um, I know there's questions on our street lighting. That, that is done through Public Works. Uh, Rackliff Electric has ordered those parts. They worked with the manufacturer. It has taken very long. Uh, it was a warranty issue. We were at a warranty on several of them. They are not cheap to replace. So I know when you, when you went, and I, let me go back. I'm talking about the, the decorative streetlights from Lincoln Trail to the bridge, uh, when I talk about streetlights. Um, it, it was a very long process. It wasn't something very easy. Um, this is not something that is, but, you know, we didn't wanna pay to have those replaced if we could get the company to warranty them. And they did. They're sending the parts. We've got about twenty-one of them that's been changed over. Um, the parts still ain't came in, but they should be in within the next probably three to four weeks. Our Public Works guys will be, Jeff and I, I think, how many, how many you all got up there right now? Twenty extra, okay, up there right now that they're changing. And so they're gonna be doing those throughout to get those back up. If you go down and look at the one at Burger, I call it Burger King Hill, it's right here. It's the one right in front of the sign. That was one of the first ones we changed out, and you will see the difference in that light fixture, even the interior of it versus what the other ones look like. And so, um, we are working on that. That was something that Rackliff Electric, uh, worked, honestly, you can talk to Wayne, um, Wayne Jury. Um, that was very tedious to get that done, but he did fight for us to get that done, and we thank him for that. And I told him we would never buy another light fixture from him again if he didn't get it fixed, and I'd have my attorney sue their pants off. Yeah, and it worked, so, yeah, so, but ultimately, that.
Good Lord.
Yeah. So ultimately, they did get that squared away. I know there's been several comments left on Facebook and several comments to us about those streetlights.
Mayor, assuming we do have all the parts in three to four weeks, how long would it take for Public Works to have them all up and running?
I'd say probably a month. Jeff, month good, no? You gotta take the, you gotta take the service off, you gotta change wiring.
I was just curious, cause like you said.
Okay.
Okay. So hopefully, within the next six to eight weeks.
I'd say in a month.
Would be fair to say, well, if it takes three to four weeks, uh, so fair to say the next six to eight weeks, we should have the decorative lights.
As long as the parts, all the parts aren't in yet, but when the parts come in. So they're just doing so many of them as they come in.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And right now, we have three lights on order. Uh, those were ones that were hit. And of course, there's a different brand that we're buying, not the same one that we had before, and theirs are being ordered through, um, through them. Uh, one thing, we're getting ready to start. There, the guys are getting the lawn mowers ready. They're getting the blades sharpened. They're getting the lawn mowers greased. Uh, we're right around the corner when it comes to grass cutting. So our guys are responsible for maintaining all of Dixie Highway, all the shoulders, medians. They do all the, um, basically, I guess, Jeff, all the shoulders down Dixie, Lincoln, Rogersville, weed eat, trash pickup. So, um, we currently, right now, uh, as far as our budget in Public Works, we typically would be around sixty percent, sixty point one percent. We're currently running at fifty-one point nine. So, um, we're doing pretty good as far as operational budget there. Uh, one of the things I talked to you all about during budget time, um, and I know, sorry, a couple of council people wasn't on the budget during that, during that cycle. Uh, we had a grade six. Um, he was our supervisor. He retired. I held that position for the one year because we were trying to save money, which it did. We didn't fill the position. And then this following, which the current budget we're in, um, I had talked to the council members previous about, um, potentially making that a grade seven to give Jeff a, cause where Jeff is, then you'd have a deputy under him, and then that would give an opportunity for someone to move up. And then actually have another someone move up and give some of the guys a way to, uh, move up a position. Um, at that time, you all did agree to that, and I can't say, you know, the ladies here, but the council prior, uh, did agree to that. Jeff and I have had conversation about looking at that, and I think at some point, uh, we'll be wanting to maybe come to you guys and ask for that grade seven position. Uh, that way, he can have some, some opportunity for move up, and then that would give him, uh, Jeff, would that give you one or two at the end?
I will have two supervisors.
Yeah. And, and I'll tell you, the, the reason for that right now, um, one of the supervisors, uh, was not able to perform during the snow. And so that left Jeff, uh, in charge, and then an individual that's not in a supervisor position, but just has had extensive knowledge, has been there about sixteen, seventeen years, eighteen years, actually played the role of that. Um, because we don't have that chain of command. We don't have that set up currently in Public Works. So that's why I wanted to give a grade seven and then move that other person to a grade six, and that would give some kinda flow into that department that currently never had that structure, so. Um, any questions? Anything else going on? Jeff, am I missing anything else, Public Works? Sidewalks, I know Jeff was yelling at me earlier that a two-by-four is now costing how much?
Twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars for a two-by-four to do sidewalks. So we're looking at permanent forms.
It's a two-by-four by sixteen.
Two-by-four by sixteen, there you go.
Well, I just don't want people.
Thinking it's just a two-by-four, yeah.
Two, two-by-four, but now ain't no way, two-by-four by sixteen, yeah.
So we're looking at some permanent forms because of sidewalks. We do, concrete's up. Uh, we were just talking about fuel prices, uh, what they could like, like at the end of the summer, um, diesel prices. Um, so all that affects us in operations. I just want you to know, we do talk about that. We do look at that, so we know, uh, what to expect, um, when it comes to those things, so.
I don't think you mentioned leaf and limb pickup and all of that. Um, when is that next round?
I did not. Jeff, do you have that? I don't know what that's good. Oh, April is cleanup month. That's actually good, yeah.
So, so people need to start getting that out there, and, and how do you want that placed alongside the road? But the, you want the limbs placed like?
It really don't matter.
Doesn't matter? Okay.
Yeah, mailboxes and power lines, and, um, please keep it to limbs only. Cause a lot of people will throw trash in there, they'll throw lumber in there, and that's not what they got. Tires, we've had tires, we've had, they'll hide a mailbox in it. And, you know, we've grabbed a couple of those. Um, but yeah, it's a good question. Next, next month, April cleanup starts, and so our guys will be going around, starting to pick that up. So, um, and then leaf pickup won't happen till fall, so leaf pickup's over, so. Uh, will it just be limb pickup and then April cleanup? And then, uh, Jeff, I don't know, I guess we still, do we still have the dumpster up there for people to schedule?
For, uh.
Large pickup?
Yes.
Yeah. We'll get the information out. Um, I will have Tim load it on our Facebook as well as our city Facebook page on the things that can be collected, things that can't be collected, so on and so forth. But yeah, thank you. Anybody else got anything for Mr. Hatley? He's the longest-running employee in the city. Well, if that's a good thing or bad thing, Jeff?
I was figuring it up. With, you know, the city's about sixty-five years old and you've been here forty of them. That's, uh, pretty impressive, I don't.
Yep.
I enjoyed most of it.
Yeah, what about it?
I'm not the only one that's been to us many times.
About the six years JJ's been mayor, has those been kinda the ones you didn't?
I have a question. Uh, you had mentioned about the sidewalks.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're responsible for the sidewalks because this person's sidewalk has been like, broke up about three or four years on Kentucky Circle. So who do they need to contact?
So if it's a repaired stuff typically, now typically, Mr. Pike, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the homeowner is responsible for the sidewalk in front of their house. But there's some incidents where ins, instances where we have went out and helped assist, um, some homeowners because of the cost, trees, stuff like that, utility companies. We, we typically go out and we'll assess it. Um, ultimately, we, the problem that we run into, we don't, the budget can't, what's the word I'm looking for, Mike? The budget can't sustain every single issue, and that's why typically they, they fall to the homeowner. Uh, but if this issue's in Kentucky Circle, we can give it to Ashley to address, and we can go out and take a look and see.
Okay.
Yeah. See what we can do. Yes, yeah. But we do have repair, we do have money in for repairs, so on and so forth, so. Yes, ma'am. Anybody else?
But Ms. Jackson, if you'd like to put more money in there, I'd support that.
Don't look at me, he asked. All right, Jeffrey, that's easy, wasn't it? All right, thank you, Jeff, for everything. Appreciate it, sir. All right, that's all I had for this. Now, I know, uh, I just wanna mention, um, Councilwoman Merle, you did wanna put that on next month's agenda, or this next coming council works, uh, council meeting on the sixteenth. I'll get it out. Gotcha. And that is the pet ordinance, um, tethering ordinance. Yeah, okay. All right, so with that, I'll start with you, Mr. Roach, Councilwoman.
I really don't have anything this evening to.
Jackson?
I don't like you with these mics. You can hear me. I guess I can't hear myself. Well, uh, I'm sure everyone feels the same way, but Councilwoman Terry Owens, uh, was just appointed recently by Governor Beshear, um, to the Kentucky Commission on Women. Uh, so, um, congratulations, Ms. Terry. Uh, really appreciate, uh, having some local leadership, uh, representing us, and, um, we're proud of you and that accomplishment, and just wanna, uh, say congratulations.
Hey. Anything?
Swoop that one right in there.
Sit down.
Yes, thank you very much. I, I actually just got a letter from Senator Rand Paul earlier this morning, so making it official, official, and then make a certificate.
Do you know, do you know what the duties are yet?
Uh, we had a meeting earlier today, which is where I was running from, trying to set and do the calendar, because there's another caucus very similar to this for, uh, women and girls that Congress has also started to rev up. And we're looking at some of the same things, disparaging treatment and limited resources and things like that. And so we'll have one more meeting Thursday night, I believe, to lay out what's coming and what bills and things that will kinda tie right into what we're trying to work on. So I look forward to being the, the Harden County kinda rep up there, um, which is kinda neat, cause now you can, you can talk about what's going on and, and have a link. I get to say, but Harden County, Harden County, Harden County, Harden, Harden, sir. And so I think it's, it's a good thing. I enjoy being asked. I had no idea it was coming. I was just, you know, riding home and the phone rings and that's who it is, is the governor on the other end. So I'm, I'm, I'm looking forward to representing us in that matter, so thank you for bringing it up, cause you know.
You were gonna say, yeah.
No, of course, I didn't say anything, but thank you, but I don't have anything else.
All right.
Well, like everybody else, you know, congratulations, uh, Councilwoman Owens. Uh, and then also, I'm looking forward to the, uh, the time change and spring coming and motorcycling. And if anybody's interested, interested, motorcycle classes start the last weekend of March.
Do you have to have your own bike, or do you provide a bike?
We supply the motorcycles and the helmet.
I'll just echo what, uh, Toshi said about the Ms. Owens being appointed. Uh, congratulations, and it's nice to be represented, uh, have a representative from Rackliff, so congratulations.
Yeah, um, I just wanna touch, uh, don't, I should've probably had the dates, and actually, it's my fault, but, um, uh, Chris, you may know the dates, but, or actually, no, Tim. Baseball and soccer signups are happening. Um, do you have those two dates?
They're online.
You don't know them off the top of your head? I just wanted to repeat them.
No, the, all the registration is online.
Okay.
Baseball ends the end of March.
I knew March twenty-ninth was baseball.
I believe soccer ends this week.
Okay. So, yeah, youth sports are starting back slowly. They, you know, they still have to follow the regulations. Tim and the guys have been out, uh, getting the fields ready. We had a meeting with soccer last week. I think Chris popped in there for a few minutes. Um, they're ready to go. They got about two hundred kids so far, and so, um, you know, people are starting to get back kinda in the swing of things, and we're hoping and that, you know, kids need to be outside. We want them to play in sports and doing stuff. Baseball, I know, I think March twenty-ninth, I believe, is the deadline for, for baseball. Um, so we're getting those parks ready and, and looking around. Saunders Springs has been doing well. If I'm not mistaken, things are open. We did have one, and just asking people to be a little vigilant out there. We did have someone break out some of the windows down at the bottom. I'm gonna go ahead and, the, was it the top, top cabin, the third one back?
Second one, the first one on the right.
First, first one on the right, was that one? I thought it was the one on that. Um, we're looking at those bids for the roofs, so you know, so we'll get those. I knew you were gonna ask as soon as that, yep, seen it coming. So hopefully, we'll have those here within the next, probably hopefully by the next meeting, by April, we'll get that done. Um, I think that's about all. Any date? You have anything?
Next, um, the regular session, you all will see something. We did not bring it to you tonight because, um, it was not finalized. But they are hoping to have it done probably by the end of the week, so the auditor can come and speak to you all on Tuesday night. So I don't want you thinking, well, why didn't they bring it to us at the work session? She had just gotten some information from somebody so she could finalize everything, so she will come and report that to you all, um, hopefully, uh, at Tuesday's meeting.
Yeah, and the, the new council members, the audit, and I'll try to get a better explanation from Chance, just so you know, the audit. Well, actually, Mr. Pike, you could probably, can you explain the audit system itself? It's, it's not, the audit is a requirement that we do. It's, it's not, the audit is a requirement that we do every year that the state requires us to do, um, this audit makes sure that our, our books are in order, that we are following the procedures that are set out, that we are supposed to follow, this, a lot of times, people think the audit itself is one that's diving into misspending, things that aren't being done correctly, what am I missing, Mr. Pike?
Right, it's, it's not a forensic audit where they're looking for misappropriation of funds necessarily, they are looking for proper procedures to be followed and, uh, to make sure that allocations were set up in, in the appropriate manner and that sort of thing, uh, but it's, it's not an investigative audit where they're turning over every stone to try to find if money was misspent or anything like that, so.
Yeah, the state requires us to meet this obligation, um, KRS, and so I remember, just as a councilperson, just, and that was something we just make sure that you guys know, um, I remember this councilperson coming, I thought, audit, oh, city's being audited, what, you know, so just in case, I just want anybody to, you know, understand.
Has to be done annually, by law.
It's an annual audit, and so, um, that report is where Susan comes in, sits down, she comes in, meets with Chance, and then Chance, she knows what to look for, she's been doing it for many years here for the city, and so she knows what to look for, and that's making sure that we're following the proper procedure and, and what's being set out for us, so, um, all right, I wanna thank the council, thank you all, we have good meetings, I think we get along pretty well, I think we have a pretty good bunch here, works together, the great leader, you know, that's gonna come up in, in the, in the type at the bottom of the, the Facebook message, so, yeah, but you all have done great, I appreciate the, the work, uh, it's already March, believe it or not, and I just, I can't, next week's already the sixteenth of the month, I just, it's, it's amazing how fast time can go, so, uh, any questions, anything y'all need, please just let us know, um, Ashley, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, with that, well-adjourned, thank you all.